Hearing to order at six o'clock for the proposed budget for fiscal year 25. And Shelley's gonna take over.
Take it away.
At the end of my home.
I'm just gonna say, ask an idea there is a student report, but we have to do a public hearing first. It's gonna be about twenty to thirty minutes, okay? So you're welcome to come out and show over with, but we have to do this point of order first, okay? All right.
Chris, do you need a minute?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm gonna share my screen so everyone can see the presentation. Okay. We have a lot of guests here, so I'll start by introducing myself. My name is Shelley Carrida. I am the Director of Business Administration for Frontier Regional and Union Thirty-Eight School District. And I have the pleasure of presenting Frontier's FY25 budget for public hearing. This document was not sent out yet. I will send this out to school committee and town administrators after the meeting. This is basically a summary of the larger document that was already shared and broken down because it was a pretty lengthy narrative that I sent you. Hopefully, select board and finance committee members receive that through your town administrators. If not, we can forward it off and I'm happy to send it to anyone that needs it, so. So we're gonna start by talking about the budget development process. I am gonna go pretty quickly because it is lengthy and I don't wanna hold us here too long, but we'll have plenty of place for questions. So in the budget development process, we seek input from key stakeholders, including administrative staff, department heads, facilities, IT, principal, curriculum, essentially anyone who's in an administrative position helping to operate the school. And our goal in budget development is to develop a needs-based, student-centered budget while being fiscally responsible and taking a hybrid approach to balancing level services, looking at supplemental funds, and then also addressing new needs and initiatives. It's a pretty comprehensive process. It starts in November and December with the administration looking at the level service budget, which replicates services, programming, staffing from the prior year. January, the first draft goes to the budget subcommittee for review. The subcommittee this year actually met again in early February and moved forward with a budget to present to full school committee at the February meeting. And then here we are in March. We have public hearing tonight, and then a vote on Thursday night, and then we'll continue through the final approval process with town meetings through April. Or I'm sorry, through June. A couple of things I wanna note in the budget process is level service does not translate to level funding. That's really important that the public hears. There's always increased costs for staffing alone based on contractual obligations or non-contractual obligations for our non-union employees. We're also experiencing, as I think all of our towns are, and all of us personally are feeling, the effects of inflation following COVID. Cost of supplies and materials is significantly higher than it has been in previous years. So while we talk about level service as the starting point, there is always a natural increase. We work hard to balance that natural increase while also looking at our new needs. So we're gonna move on and start with level services. And what those numbers look like. So what is the level service increase for fiscal year 25? So we are looking at, level service came in at 2.62%, or roughly $330,000. You can see the composition of the increase there is split between wages and non-wages. Contractual increases for union employees represented a 2% COLA plus a STEP, which varies depending on the teacher or the IA contract, but is an average of about 4% per STEP increase. That number can be higher if you have someone who advanced their education and has a higher degree and they're seeing COLA movement within the contract. So some employees will actually receive instead of the two plus four, it might be two plus five or six, depending on how far advanced they've gotten with their degree. So that's important to take into consideration here because it's not level across the board for all staff, and it does have a big impact. Non-union employee wages include any other staff in the building, secretaries, cafeteria, custodial, administrative staff that are on individual contracts. If I left anyone out, I do apologize. It's just an oversight on my part. And then we also look to capture savings due to retirements or attrition. So if we know we have someone retiring and they were a veteran teacher, they've been here for 20, 25 years, we expect to hire at a lower step within the contract, so we take that into consideration as well. I believe for Frontier, that is about a $70,000 savings this year, or this level services would be that much higher, closer to $40,000. Non-wage increases impacting the budget year to year are always our non-employee insurance or liability insurance, particularly our student accident insurance. Some of those are based on claims, some of it's just based on the market. Health insurance is a significant factor. The district has not seen a significant increase in health insurance rate in some years. In fact, prior to last year, for five years, there was no increase with the Hampshire County Health Insurance Trust. Last year, there was a 6% increase. This year, we're seeing an 8% increase. So that has been reflected in the budget as well. Retirement contributions, those are twofold. What we contribute to Franklin Regional Retirement for anyone who is not on the teacher contract, we are assessed annually. That contribution has gone up this year, as well as our employee separation costs we take into consideration there. So based on the teacher contract, there is a sick buyback when teachers retire. This year, that worked out in Frontier's benefit. We have a savings in that line item, so that's reflected in the budget as well. Transportation and building grounds and maintenance are also significant drivers in our non-wage increase. Transportation, I know that the bid and the contract info was sent out to school committee. I think that strickled out to town administrators as well. It is an agenda item later on on the agenda, I believe, for executive discussion, our session for further discussion on that. But what I will say in this regard is Frontier is not seeing the same level of impact to the budget as the elementary schools. Because of the way that the prior contract was structured and some changes that we had within the contract in the last five years, for example, the budget was built for 12 buses. The last few years, we've only been using 11 buses based on ridership. So there already was a buffer built in, and then we added a 10% increase. So Frontier is not bearing the brunt of the significant transportation cost increase next year, although there is 40,000 additional built in. Building grounds and maintenance, we have not increased these line items in at least the five years that I have been with the district, and we spend over repeatedly. Budget subcommittee and administration, and eventually school committee felt like it was time to add in some additional funds. Our regular, our typical budget for buildings and grounds maintenance is about 70,000 to 75,000. We're increasing that to 100,000 in a year. And again, that's primarily related to supplies and materials and cost of contracted services. Any types of repairs that we're doing are significantly higher than they were, particularly in the last few years since COVID. All right.
Do you want to take questions?
Sure.
Linda, you have your hand up? Linda, do you have a question? Hand it up and down, somebody guessed. No, you have one there. Feel free to put your hand up.
Anyone here have questions? All right. So we're gonna talk about new requests and initiatives next, and what was requested this year is explained here on the slide. What was approved is an additional 0.52%, or $65,000. So we talked about new requests of $115,000, which was made up of transitioning the athletic director position to full-time and changing the role slightly back to where it was a AD/PE teacher a few years back. So we're looking to increase about 50,000 for that. We have outside consultant services for professional development for new teachers, and then we have teacher stipends. Both of those items have been paid from ESAR funds for the prior three years. Those funds will no longer be available. It's about $15,000 for that additional increase. The last item that was discussed was the addition of a full-time athletic trainer, which would be a contracted position, not a staffing position. This position had a significant level of conversation and debate at the last school committee meeting. It was agreed that there is a desire to add this position, whether it's contracted or staff member to the budget. However, we felt like we needed more information, and we did not want to increase the budget by another $50,000. So we agreed that the administration would go back and get an updated contract for one, and two, see if there would be another funding source to fund this, if not next year, in the future. So that'll be up for future conversation. But what was approved by school committee at the February meeting is the full-time AD/PE teacher, and then 15,000 for teacher professional development and teacher stipends.
Will you be coming back to these for discussion, or should we be asking you questions as you go through the slots?
I find you questions now.
Okay, so if we zero in on the full-time athletic director, as I see on the spreadsheet, now that has gone from 11,000 to now 70,000. So you're adding 65 to a part-time $11,000 position. Yes, or?
So let me explain the position, and then we can talk about the numbers, because the position has evolved over the last couple of years. Previously, this position was a stipend in the teacher contract. So we had a PE teacher acting as the AD, receiving about $11,000. Last year...
Listen, they're very limited. They were teaching one block out of the day when it was four blocks, teaching blocks, or teachers do. So not only were they doing the position, it wasn't just they were a teacher with a stipend. The majority of their day was blocked off for athletic directing. They taught one class, one block a day. So multiple classes because it's PE every other day. Just wanna make sure, because it sounds like it's, like they're working a full-time job and then just took a stipend at the end. It was part of the compensation.
Except that they were expected to be here regular hours, so normal teacher workday, and then covering whatever they needed to for athletic events on top of it. So last year, after the budget was approved, unfortunately, the change happened with the position, and the teacher that was in that role resigned from the AD position, but was maintained as a PE. Please correct me if I'm wrong.
That's what you are.
Maintained as a PE teacher, and this year has returned to teaching more PE classes and only teaching PE. So administration and school committee had to make a decision about how to move forward with the AD position. We need an athletic director. Sports are prominent here. You knew that yourself.
Sure.
So the position changed to part-time out of the contract. So in the current year, we are paying $25,000. So we're finding funds that were not budgeted last year.
An AD that has experience in permanent inside.
Well, so it'll get posted, and if someone internally wants to apply, they're certainly welcome to. I think the tricky part with this that we're gonna have to navigate is, in order to teach PE, you have to have teacher qualifications as well. So, you know, George will be seeking unique candidates that can fulfill both those roles. But the idea behind this position, and again, please interrupt George if I'm not translating properly, the idea behind this is that they will teach an afternoon class so that they can have flexibility in the schedule to flex and be here more at night when they need to, so that we're not burning out whoever this person is in the role. Because the athletic director position is significant.
I think MIA says that has, do they have to show up to all games?
You have to have a game administered. You give you an assigned person in a tournament game, you have to have an actual school administrator.
So going back to the numbers, when you look at the line-by-line budget, you are 100% correct. It does show that we are jumping from 11 to 75 because of all of those changes that have taken place in the last two years.
Okay. And if you look at that full-time athletic trainer, now, I mean, personally, I would be supportive of that, but who will manage that person? And have you, has that, I mean, it almost falls to within the medical nursing realm in some respects, and the athletic trainer, has there been any thought to go outside and contract?
So we are looking at a contracted service with Cooley Dickinson slash Maspar and Women's. They have these services available. They did provide us a quote a few years back. It would be a full-time position. The trainer would be at all wrestling and all football events as required, and then, that's required by MIAA, and then onsite, available to assess injuries, whether it's, you know, during a game or post-injury, prepare that kind of thing, work with students, maintain inventory, you know, just kind of work with coaches. Who they would report to. There is some structure in the contract about who they report to at the hospital that they fall under, but then here, it would be, you know, ultimately between George, the AD, Scott dredge, and any nursing staff would need to be involved.
And as it's a contracted position, it would pay a hundred and fifty.
So we understand the need for this. It's just a matter of finding something.
MIAA has required us to move now to a separate rule.
We contract out primarily with local EMT or other athletic trainers if we can, but it's only at the required events currently, only at football, only at wrestling. And not necessarily the same person. Not necessarily the same person.
Right. No, it's definitely, even using EMTs, you can't. All right. We have questions from the Southernland Select Board? They're all there.
Yes, Desi, um, can you ask a question?
Okay.
Are you hearing?
No.
Oh, the microphone's not... You can hear us fine right now when I'm talking, right, Jeff? It's when people from the side are.
Yes, darling, everybody heard.
Yes. Just, we'll repeat, we'll repeat questions in session. Thanks. Your way through this community, sound community.
Any other questions on the new requests before I keep going? What's next? All right. So let's talk about the total cost. So we talked about a level service increase and new request of 65,000. So that puts our total general fund for FY25 at 3.14% increase over the prior year. That's what we are presenting tonight in public hearing. I also wanted to make a note that we do use additional funds to fully pay for the district's budget. There are grants of almost 400,000 and roughly 1.4 million in revolving funds that we use as well. So moving forward, when we talk about funding sources, we are talking about a total budget of $14,772,071. Is that right? All right. Let's next. We're gonna talk about expenses next. I'm not gonna read through this. This was in the major narrative handout, but this is the chart of account narrative that Desi sends us as what the categorized expenses are. There are really five or six primary categories: district administration, instruction, pupil services, plant operations, benefits and fixed charges, and then programs for the regional school districts. So that's our out-of-district leasing costs. And how are Frontier's expenses distributed? So just a few quick facts in here. Forty-seven percent of the budget are directly related to instruction slash teaching and learning. So that is anyone that's working directly with students, so teachers, IA's, administrative staff in the main office, non-central office staff. So anyone who's directly involved in educating students. Expenses related to employee and retiring benefits make up about 2.5 million. Pupil services, which is primarily transportation, but also includes the medical office, so the nurse's office, athletics, and food service. That's about 1.6 million of the budget. Physical plant and operations, so building and grounds is about 1.3 million. And I also wanna note that about 55% of the budget goes to wages. Majority of that going directly to staff who work with students. So a couple of charts here. These were all in the larger packet that I sent out just to give you a visualization. So that's where you see almost half of the overall expenses are going to instruction. Salaries and wages, you can see where that larger number comes into play. And then overall, it starts to iron itself out a little bit with benefits and fixed charges being the most significant. All right. So we're gonna move on to how the budget is funded. I'm gonna talk a little bit about Chapter 70. Anyone who's been around the block a few times knows that Chapter 70 is a very complicated formula, so I'm really gonna get minimalistic on this. If you have questions, please stop me. But this is directly from Desi's website. The Chapter 70 program is the major program of state aid to public elementary and secondary schools. In addition to providing state aid to support school operations, it also establishes minimum spending requirements for each school district and minimum requirements for each municipality's share of school costs. So that last statement there, each municipality's share of school costs, is what is also known as the required town contribution, and has a significant impact on the assessment, which we're gonna continue to talk about as we go through. And then the state aid is what Frontier actually receives from the state for revenue to help support the budget. Continuing talking about Chapter 70. So our state aid, Frontier state aid in FY25, it numbers up there, almost two point, or, I'm sorry, almost 3 million stated there. You can see in that third bullet down, it is only a $14,340 increase over FY24. And that is because Frontier is in what is called hold harmless state. And with hold harmless, it means that your enrollment is either declining or stagnant from the prior year. So because our enrollment has sort of leveled off or decreased, we are only seeing a minimum per pupil increase of $30 per student. That translates to the $14,340. As it stands right now, this is based on the governor's budget, the last two school years, that number has increased through the state budget process to $60 per pupil. If that's the case, we'll receive an additional roughly 15,000. At this number, it funds about 23% of the district's general fund expenditures. So it leaves a pretty significant gap for us to find other funding sources, which primarily comes from our towns. You're gonna see that repeat theme as we continue to go through the process.
And I just also want to add in, as you listen to the news and stuff, about the Student Opportunity Act, Student Opportunity Act is Chapter 70. So they, they just kind of recall it's something else, they're putting more money into it. The majority of that funds are going to, are going to more urban districts, where the most students are, but really, there's a large number of schools like ours, or I think it's 160, that are getting a minimum amount of money, add up to 300 and so towns in the state. So just kind of putting it out there. When the state vote is in rails, they're doing a lot of talk at state level about whether they're gonna correct that, but this is where we are right now. And I think the handout, question from Southernland?
Yeah, you're saying this year, 23% of the general fund is funded. Do you know what it's been the last couple of years? Is that a decrease?
No, it's roughly the same. We have received that minimum per pupil increase for quite some time. So it's not gonna fund any more than that, and it's not going to ever be any less. It's written into the law that a district must receive at least what they got the prior year, plus the $30 per pupil, unless they change the legislation, as I said, and they increase that to 60 the last two years.
Hey Jeff, just so you know, I had to mute you because your system is giving feedback to our system. After you ask your question, you have to mute, okay? Because you're, you guys are broadcasting our sound on your system.
There is talk out there.
There is talk.
Sorry.
Good.
There's a lot of talk in the news about how some districts are seeing a decrease in their Chapter 70. That is in relation to the Student Opportunity Act that Darius was just explaining. While some districts have received more money in the past, the way that the formula is written, it takes into consideration an inflation factor. Inflation is down from 24 to 25, according to the state's formula. So districts that received hundreds or some even millions of dollars more in aid in '24 are seeing a decrease. We're not gonna have that happen because we're guaranteed to get at least what we received before, plus the per pupil increase. However, it's only $14,000, so it's really not helping in the grand scheme of things.
You don't have the problem. You don't have the problem of receiving less this year because we received too much last year.
Yes.
We're not too much of a budget sum.
So the second part of the Chapter 70 that I touched on in the last slide is the town required contribution. So this is the amount that the state says our towns, our member towns can afford to pay for public education of residents at the time Frontier Regional School District. So this is based on a few things. Again, a very complicated formula, but primary factors are enrollment. And you can see the change in enrollment on the slides there in here where it says 24 and 25. Those are the enrollment numbers. So you can see we're decreasing by 10 students, 10 resident students, from 488 to 478. And then the next two columns show you the dollar amount that the state said each of our towns could pay in '24 and '25. I know that is small on the screen. The bottom line is the state says that our four member towns can afford to pay $111,944 more than they did in the prior year. Conway is seeing an increase of $38,000. Deerfield, according to the state, will pay $12,000 less. Sunderland will pay $18,000 more, and Waitley, according to the state's formula, can afford $67,000 more. So Waitley is carrying the brunt of that increase for required town contribution.
This year.
This year, yes.
It was our turn.
Yeah. Any questions on this before I keep going?
I have a question. So school choice, how does that factor into hold harmless?
School choice does not factor into hold harmless. Chapter 70 is strictly related to resident students.
So what's the enrollment this year in terms of the 488 students, and what additional number of students with school choice?
I have an enrollment slide that I can pull up. I believe we're going to be, let me get to my... So the question was, what is the school choice enrollment number compared to, you have it?
Also, I like this presentation this year.
Thank you. So this is gonna be hard to see because it's small.
We'll just read them.
So this is a five-year, whoops, see?
We can, we can.
It's okay. I think it's an important question, I think.
No, it was to follow on, to be helpful. If the Chapter 70, if it's possible, to send us like a 10-year history, they'd like to take that and then look at inflation.
Yeah.
Because they talked about CPI inflation, assuming, but we don't live in the world of CPI inflation. We have COLA step-ups. I mean, it's kind of apples and donuts.
So this might be hard to see here, but this gives you a, I think it's five, seven years, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven years. You can see the, the orange is total enrollment. We've gone since 2019 fiscal year, 647 students, of which 172 were school choice, to 615 is what we're projecting next year, with 167 being school choice. So our resident enrollment is actually dropping. Our school choice enrollment is staying relatively steady, probably on average about 175 students a year over the last seven years.
Someone has their hand up again? Again?
Let me, back on the last slide, Charlie. Yeah, thank you. Just, just for people maybe watching, Sunderland's enrollment went down and our state, the town required contribution went up. Is that because the assessed properties in town went up? Or, I didn't even want to get into too much detail about the formula, but...
No, that's a really great question, Jeff. You're, you're right on target there. So I said that there are a couple of components of the formula, which I am gonna touch on exactly what you just said. So enrollment is one of them, as is town property values, and actual resident income. So the people that live in your towns, how much money they make impacts what the state says that you can afford to pay for education based on the formula. Does that answer your question, Jeff? So while your enrollment is down, your property values are likely higher, especially given the market right now. And as, you know, we can assume that your residents are making more money as well.
And we've talked about this, that because of the size of our towns, you could have a millionaire or two move into town and throw off this whole thing. And you actually didn't make more money other than hopefully buy a very nice house. But outside of that, they can throw off the whole, the whole thing. And that happened, I remember happening in Conway a few years back, where you had to move in and you had some money coming in from the dam or something of that sort. And, you know, you were up $112,000, $112,000.
And I think Sunderland, when they built those apartments, right?
Yeah, I don't know if that's happened in Sunderland, had they burned, so those kind of things. So, yeah, so that's the, we don't have any control or understand how that number is. It's just sent through us on the cherry sheet.
And if I could just address that, this is one...
Thank you, Jeff. I think, yeah, and what I always, you know, many of you guys, but it's a chance to address. There's somebody really cruel about tapping towns, raising taxes 2.5%, but having it formally based on what they could pay, when you can't actually set that up. So, I would put it off there as a thing.
Jeff, this is Philip, your colleague on the Conway Select Board. If there's one thing that we could, that when, when we advocate with our legislative people, that, if there's one thing that would be the most effective for our towns is for them to make changes in this formula that they use to determine the minimum contribution. Especially the part about the income. They know that it's, it's deeply unfair to the towns, to towns with smaller populations. With towns with larger populations, it smoothes out. But it is very often the case in our four towns that it's just one or two financially blessed families that come into your town in the year, in the past year, that skews your whole town's additional, you know, that makes your whole town liable for additional payments. And Massachusetts is one of these only bizarre world states where you actually get penalized for wealthier people moving into your town. And everybody else has to subsidize that to this extent. And, and they could, they could alter this formula. And there's always talk about it, but this is the one thing that you should, that, you know, I try to get people to talk to their legislators about. They can make a change in this.
Yeah, so I think to just kind of put it a little more concisely, if you are concerned about how money goes to especially rural districts, how all this money gets funded, I would encourage anybody who's watching or listening or getting this information, one way or the other, to reach out to your local representatives and share, share those concerns. Because we are not unique in terms of rural districts who face these financial challenges and it ends up not just falling on the school committee's shoulders, but all of yours as well.
Okay. Anyone else before we keep going? Alright, let's move on. So let's talk about other funding sources next. I'm gonna quickly move through these, but again, we'll give opportunity for questions. So these are the additional funding sources. So if the Chapter 70 only covers 23%, we need to make up that difference elsewhere. And this is what we're projecting for next school year. So state transportation reimbursement only applies to a regional school district. It is reimbursement from the state for resident students who we transport, who reside at least one and a half miles from the school. So there is again, a formula that's taken into consideration. I know that the governor is committed to, or has been committed to, increasing the number, although we are seeing a decline here over FY24 because of the state's budget status. I believe we're down about 40,000 as written on the cherry sheet stands right now. Years and years and years ago, when the state put regional transportation into play, it was to incentivize small districts like ours to regionalize and provide support for that transportation. They guaranteed funding at 100% and it's never been funded at 100%. I believe last year it was 90. And the way the governor's budget written right now is about 80%. And again, that's only reimbursement on residents we transport over 1.5 miles from the school. Excess and deficiency is another revenue source for the district. So like our towns, Frontier operates in much of the same fashion when it comes to E and D. We are allowed to carry excess free cash, up to 5% of the budget, into the new year for whatever expenditures we see fit as school committee approves. So that could be capital projects, use of funds towards the budget, and holding for emergencies. We do have to go through an approval process with our towns when we want to use those funds, so we make sure we're following what's required by law there. And historically, over the last at least five years, if not longer, the school committee has committed $200,000 of excess and deficiency towards the next year's budget. That will be maintained in FY25. And here's where the big number comes into play again. The balance of our budget outside of what's funded by special revenues, because these three pieces on the left pertain only to the general fund, not any of our revolving funds and grants which supplements our budget. So the additional almost 4 million will be funded through the member town assessment. So the state says that our towns can afford to pay, it was 5.6 million, I think, on the last slide? Yes, 5, 6, 1, 4, 0, 0, 5. And in order for us to actually fully operate our budget, or our school, and meet the district requirements of almost 13 million, we will assess the towns an additional $4 million roughly. And that's based on cost sharing agreement as written in the regional agreement developed, I can't remember what year, but a long time ago. And we're gonna talk a little bit more about the assessment coming up. So if you do have questions about the assessment, if you can hold those until we continue going through, that would be great. So then the last piece of this slide on the far right there explains our special, special revenues. I talked about that a little bit earlier. That's where we come up with the 14.7 million versus the general fund budget of, I think it was like 12.5. We use an additional 1.7 million of revolving funds and grants. That could include school choice revenues. We have a thriving special education program here where we bring in students from other districts and receive tuition funds for that, that's included here. School lunch revenues. What else is in there athletics revolving, if it supplements? Grants may include state and/or federal grants. Some are special education related, some not. So it's a pretty significant number. It's about usually on average, year to year, an additional 10 to 13% of supplemental funds that is not funded through the general fund. So we are doing what we can to keep the general fund number down as much as we can. Any questions on revenues outside of the assessment? I think the next slide is just a pie chart showing you here what the funding really looks like. So the Chapter 70 aid is in the blue, that is in the upper portion of the pie chart. The member town state required contribution is the larger green chunk. And then the additional member town assessment is the orange. So you can see our four towns are funding roughly three quarters of our budget. And then the other smaller funding sources, excess and deficiency, state transportation, and then grants and revolving funds. Quick historical information, I'm not gonna read all of this to you, but generally, in a five-year span, Frontier's budget has grown 13.29% or $1.5 million, which translates to an average of 2.65 a year, or just over 300,000 a year.
Question from Sunderland?
Yeah, there's more of the statements that in that same timeframe, Sunderland's assessment has gone up by over 64,000 and increased about 30%. So, well, we appreciate everything you do to keep the overall number down. To one point, I think Sunderland has seen dramatically higher increases than the other towns.
Which historically goes back to the state's formula, not because of the budget cost share percentage, but you guys did have a big swing over multiple fiscal years of what the state said that you could afford, which increased your assessment pretty significantly. Alright. I believe we're getting into assessment. Alright, let's talk about it, because here's what everybody wants to know, what the numbers look like. So according to the regional agreement, the costs of construction and operation are shared between member towns according to a five-year enrollment average. So the formula is the state required contribution, plus the additional to fund the budget, plus any capital assessment and any debt service assessment equals the total assessment to our towns annually. Cost sharing formula for next year is here. You can see the five-year rolling enrollment is based on 2,296 students. The breakdown there is by town. Conway's share for FY25 is 16.46%. Deerfield, 48.69. Sunderland, 23.43. And Watley, 11.41. Snapshot of the general fund assessment, so you can see the total state required contribution of 5.6 million. The additional assessment of 3.9. So our total general fund assessment is just above 9.5 million comparatively to last year, which was 9.2. So the overall assessment is 3.69% for the general fund. Capital and debt. School committee is proposing a $100,000 assessment for fire panel replacement project and a debt service assessment for the BAN interest that comes due in July for projects that have already been completed and voted on years ago. That debt coming due in July is just over $40,000. So the total capital and debt assessment is $140,230, which is $17,045 over the prior year. And then I've given you the total assessment numbers here. So when you add up those three components, you can see in the far column FY24 to FY25 change. Conway is seeing a 5.25% increase. Deerfield, 1.89. Sunderland, 4.20. Watley, 9.51. And overall, Frontier's budget assessment is growing by 3.83% with all components factor. And that is all I have to say. But I'm happy to answer questions. We can go back to things if you have assessment questions. You know, I did send out the full doc. I have some copies here if anyone wants paper copies. And I can send out the truncated slideshow as well.
I have a question regarding expenditure side. What expenditures at this point are we speculating? In other words, we obviously know the salary increases and steps. But what expenditures, I call it a material amount, $50,000 or more based on our budget size are yet not known? Health insurance is pretty well figured in, right?
Everything should be known at this point. The last scary and surprising factor came last week with the transportation bit, and that's been accounted for in here. I don't anticipate, short of an emergency, I don't anticipate any significant changes in our numbers.
I wrote down a bunch of notes, apologizing. Yeah, so first, thank you very much for the very informative presentation. You guys are always very disciplined about how you go about the budgeting. It's totally appreciated. I want to give you a little feel for where Deerfield is totally financially right now. The, the schools, you know this, probably saying anyway. So the schools are like 65-plus percent of our total budget. Prop 2.5 limits are increased to 2.5% plus new growth. New growth is not horrendously significant. So when the school goes up 3.8%, that's really hard on the rest of the things that we fund in town. So it, it's challenging to do that. And when you look at these, everybody's like, why are you whining? Because you've only got 1.8% here. But the kids who, a whole bunch of kids are going to Franklin Tech. So we had a 10-kid increase in Franklin Tech. Our Franklin Tech bill went up 40%. So our overall school bill did not, it is not just a 1.7%. Because when you wrap Franklin Tech in, that's, it's, I think it's probably more for kids incrementally to go to Franklin Tech than it is to come to Frontier, right? So, so we are, you know, I am whining and it's not because of Frontier, but, but it's because there's...
Just so you know, Franklin Tech is supposed to be 27,000 per student here, 15.
Yeah, exactly. So we are in Deerfield, we're kind of up against the prop 2.5 limit. And we're trying, desperately trying not to do an override this year. But we are, when we put all of the budget together right now, it looks like we're about 150,000 in the hole. And that's with, the only capital that's in that budget is your capital request. So we're not buying anything for the highway department, no capital at all. And we're going through and trying to cut budgets. Our town accountant went through and has been working with all the different categories. She was able to find about 110,000 that she was cut out. And then the transportation bill came in and just like made that up, right? So we're really kind of hurting in Deerfield this year. The only, and I hate it when people say whine and say like, this is all bad and they don't offer any suggestions. I have no suggestions, really. But if, if you all can find anywhere that you have reserves or anything that you can apply to this. The one idea I did have, doesn't help the Deerfield taxpayer much, but it helps us with that prop 2.5 limit. When you go back to your capital projects, I think you've paid off some of the debt excluded with reserves. And I was wondering if you could pay for that fire alarm panel with the reserves and charge us 100,000 under debt excluded instead of not debt excluded. That would help us with our prop 2.5 problem without decreasing the money that you all have received.
So, I don't know.
Does that make sense? I don't feel like I explained everyone.
I don't know if everyone understands, and maybe you do, but I had to look some things up to make sure I knew what the town would be trying to go for. So maybe we can talk about that a little bit more, because if school committee is gonna deliberate that...
I mean, we did receive the court request to consider this from the town here, but it's appropriate time to bring it up now. So go ahead and just take it.
Yeah, so I guess the question I have is...
Why don't you restate it so that...
Okay.
It's also so that the...
The owl?
The owl can hear you.
Okay. So with debt exclusion, it's a one-time tax increase, right? It's not prop 2.5 where it's long-term. But you still need a ballot vote and...
But we already voted it. Like several years ago, we voted to debt exclude the, that whole chunk of money. That, oh, 40,000 or something of that is still...
That's the interest.
But you said, yeah, but you said you were paying off the debt...
We are, yes.
Using your funds. Can you pay off everything except for $100,000 of that debt?
So you won't have to do another ballot vote?
Right, it's already debt excluded, it's already been voted.
That was the part that Darius and I weren't 100% sure about. So there's no risk to Frontier of it not getting approved at the town and not exactly get to a success?
Right, it's already been approved.
So that will come in when we discuss it later.
Yeah. So we're gonna circle that.
If school members have questions for, so we're this, the public hearing part of this, we're having dialogue with the public, which is essentially our finance committees and select boards. But, so if school members have questions regarding that, we'll have a discussion afterwards. If we're gonna hold the budget in that way, but it's a good time for a dialogue if people have questions about. So we use the brain power in the room if you do.
I gotta show, is that your concern, is that if we did that, that we'd be at risk of waiting for a ballot to approve that?
Right.
Yeah, okay.
So yeah, that, that's, if, if, if the school can help the towns and it doesn't affect the budget in any way, it makes sense to help the towns. it makes sense to help the towns.
Well, there would still be the assessment. It's just a matter of how the town pays for it.
Correct. But I would ask that the school run this by the school attorney and make sure that the school attorney agrees and that the votes are of record and et cetera, et cetera. And it would not...
So the school committee does that here in the meeting. We have, we're not voting the budget tonight. So I can follow up with council and all that stuff.
What, Australia?
No, unless you can think of any other way to say something.
That was, thank you. Okay.
Any other?
Can I just make a general comment? Great presentation. Liked it. To the point. This is the budget. The other thing comes here, talk about money. It's the hard part. And I think what it really needs is to marry the soft side. And you wanna bring up Franklin Tech. When they, I'm just doing a little comparative here. When you listen to them, they marry the dollars with the value. So they, so you know that they're spending X amount of money in a certain place, but how is that gonna impact the student and where is that going to lead for those students, both within the school and after they graduate? So at the end of it all, yes, $27,000 a year per student is sometimes a tough one to swallow, but you sit back and you go, well, you know something? I get it. And we've got a good school there. They're all doing a terrific job. But for the average taxpayer out there who wants to look at what we're getting for 50 cents for every dollar that I pay in taxes, I don't know if that, if there's an equation there. And I would strongly encourage that somehow to marry this dollar perspective to what's going on in the steps. What are we looking for to improve the biology department, the chemistry department? Yes, we hear a lot about phys ed and we got a new track and that's terrific. But there are stronger components to the school than what's outside of it. So that's my value statement.
And later on, you'll hear a presentation about some of the new initiatives we have going on in the school with their innovative athletic program and so on and so forth that we have people here that are gonna present. So we'll be bringing that. I mean, there is, I hear what you're saying, but there's a lot going on. There's a lot going on in our school. Our placement to two- and four-year colleges is around 7%. You know, we are doing well and we're meeting the needs of so many different types of students in this school. So I mean, I guess I could add that statement to this. I mean, sometimes I'm preaching to people who know that. You know, I'm watching at home, but I mean, I hear what you're saying. It's a balance of, people wanna get into details of the budget and some people will say, okay, a little too squishy with some of the other stuff and trying to brag about what we're doing. We're a very successful school and just by the number, I mean, you're balancing amount of schools with school choice itself, where people are valuing so much to try and come in, where it's a point where we have to shut off admissions. Just shows you the kind of programming we're putting into our building. It is also, I want to mention about tech because towns need to realize this because I think nobody, I don't know who the members of the regional tech, their committee are, but they've increased their enrollment by 100 students in the last five years while the county's gotten smaller. Every school in the county's gotten smaller, but tech has decided to get bigger. So that bill is going to continue to grow in each of your small towns because they're going to continue to, they can accept more and more students while we only can accept who are coming here as our residents outside school choice. So I'm just saying that that bill is increased because of the number, they've increased the number of students they're accepting. And that's the value change of the county, that we want more students going to tech, field, into what they're offering, different things. And I question people to be looking at that, you know? I'm not looking at different type of programming here than what they're providing there, but I just want to say that out loud because that is, it is what's happening. That bill is gonna continue to go up because we're, as a county, saying we're valuing more students going to tech route rather than general college preparatory and route there. So, yeah, just saying that out loud.
You're tracking, trying to think. Now, what about the charter schools? Are you keeping headcount?
So charter schools have the same kind of, same kind of pull. Right now, if we talk about, you know, we are paying off the debt, the 1.3 million dollars in the debt for the track and whatnot through school choice. And part of that is because the amount of money that we're spending on the bills of the students leaving this has gone down by 35%. The number of students leaving this district to go to charter schools and choice out. Sometimes you have choice out just by a family member works in a district or across the street from, you know, I call it, you know, different schools, so it's right on the border. Sometimes you have that, but the overall, the idea of choice out over discontent, so to speak, is way down, as I said, it's down 35% as it was just a few years before COVID. So, you know, we're, less students are going out and choosing those things. The charter, we can go down the charter route about how that's funding, that funding formula, equal access to, you know, all students.
We're lucky right now. We don't have anybody in charter school.
We do have people in charter school. It's just down 35%, which increases our...
At one time, we were upside down. We were paying more going out than coming in. Now we're getting...
We are one of the few districts in Mass, well, certainly in the area, that is, our revenue is higher coming in than is going out. Most of our neighboring towns are paying more out to charter and choice. We actually are able to, you know, have savings there than, we've recently been paying off capital projects with that and not setting up a good debt. So, and obviously paying off that debt everybody.
Is that a good thing?
It's a very good thing. Because in my, it's a very good thing because without the debt, we're gonna be able to control year to year what kind of capital improvements we have. We've taken this building that is, you know, it's reached its midlife, it's reached its midlife crisis. We've replaced the boilers. We're now in the process of repairing parts to the roof. You look at the carpet and furniture, it's been replaced for the next 20 years. You know, HVAC systems are being updated, you know. So a couple more, the big pieces are being fixed. Obviously, you saw our parking lot as you came in, it's due, but we've kind of put that off because that, as I look at it, I look at what we do inside the building is the most important. Student program is most important. You know, a couple potholes we can work around. So those are the kind of the big things that are going on. So this building is gonna be reset for the next 20 years. You know, we don't have to be saving money for the boiler breaking down because we have three branded boilers. We don't need to be saving money for, you know, you know, that kind of thing. Instead of worrying about parts to the roof, so we're not completely there yet, but at this point moving forward, there's no current debt. You know, we can open up more if we decide to take on any other projects or other concerns.
Regarding school choice incoming, what's the capacity of the school? If you just open doors and, I know there's a limit. The state sets a limit as to how many, how many schools should pull in now?
No, we can pull as many as we want. So we basically, the number we create is based on our middle school. So we get, most of our students are coming school choice from our elementary schools. We will get maybe another 10 or so in seventh grade. We cap the seventh grade so that our class size is, George helped me out, is it 18 to 20?
Yeah.
Around 18 to 20 per class. So we cap that out. And what happens is, so we carry those two numbers through, and then that number will drop off as we lose, in ninth grade, we'll lose the tech, and then some people will make different high school decisions that way. It's really, you know, private schools, usually people go, you know, they're going to, you know, private high school. That kind of thing. So that number, so right now, our number is for middle school between around 115. We leave a few spots open for, you can get to up to 120. That is really our cap. We leave a little bit for residents so we don't go over and have class sizes too large.
So the driver in the system is not only elementary, but also the end result, the frontier, continuing the frontier. So they see a value there. So they see a value in having their children attend our elementary schools and coming here. And that value, I think is, you can promote that to a greater extent than what it is being promoted. And Franklin Tech has done that pretty well. So I think the opportunity is there.
Correct me if I'm wrong, I think we have to balance the amount of school choice we bring in because it can overload the elementary schools. When we start building entire classes that are purely school choice and they're only having $5,000 that comes in, it can overwhelm the elementary schools. There's a balance of how much we actually can take.
Keith brings up a good point. So right now, our elementary schools are shrinking in size. Deerfield used to be three sections per grade level, and Sunderland used to be two sections per grade level. Deerfield reached a point where the amount of school choice they had, where they, it happened like in one or two cases, but you almost had a full class of school choice. So now we've reduced that number of classes in the elementary school, which means the number of school choice being brought up to the system is going to come down over the next year. So the, we involve revenue that we got from the amount of school choice. That number is gonna start coming down because our population's coming down. We're only rounding out a class that's already, that's happening. So depending on what your enrollment is, you know, if you have a class of 12 students from town, you know, we're gonna try to add the up to six school choice to get a class of 18, 18 to 20, you know, younger grades, a little bit more for the higher, you know, four, five, six, or five, six. So, but those, the number of sending classes is coming down. So the number of school choice is going to come down over the next few years as well. So it does become that balance, like, you know, it's more difficult at the secondary level to look at, you know, what is the impact of school choice after they leave middle school. Because middle school, they're still grouped by, that's why we kind of use that as the measuring stick. We play plenty of room in the high school. We just have less people moving in their sophomore year. And they kind of got themselves established. We get a few here and there, but you know, how many kids are taking, you know, AP history versus, you know, regular US history? How many are school choice? How many are that? At that point, they get scattered about and you don't really know. But, you know, we do the measuring stick, the class size based on those.
I just thought I'd bring that up because it spreads awesome. You know, reach out and...
Any other questions or comments?
Or we could, could you speak a little bit to how value's being added or going to be in the field adding the AD and professional development budget positions?
Sure. So the question was the advocate of the AD and the stipends. I'll start with the athletic director. It's, right now, in the last few years, we've added athletics. We've added boys tennis from a co-ed team, or we have a few boys playing on the girls' team, to a full participation there. We've added indoor track during the winter, which has 80-something, something participants in it. And we've...
Boys volleyball.
Added boys volleyball.
Unified basketball.
And unified basketball, unified basketball, you know, students with different needs, you know, participating in athletics. So every single one of them, they're scheduling, hiring coaches, scheduling games, facilities. You know, those are distinct athletic, just medical forms, you know, all the different, you know, making sure, physicals, all those kind of things. Everything with sports kind of going on. So every single change. Then Frontier also has the blessing and curse of being a very successful athletic school. The amount of postseason that we're in across the board is the additional amount of games that require the next level of supervision and setup and orchestrating. So it really is a full-time job. Here at Frontier, I think the, right now, we're kind of balancing out on 80%, full-time and trying to adjust that. We are gonna have to work with the union because it is in the contract written differently. Right now, we have a one-year memory of understanding to move away from the contract as we're in a position where when Carl Seer, who was the previous athletic director, left as athletic director, we didn't post, we didn't have any applicants, you know, to do that, to be stipend position. So then we needed a part-time position. And right now, we're seeing that it really is...
And I can speak to the other, the other part you were asking about, you were asking about professional development. So basically, what we've been, what we've been paying with the hazard funds, we're looking to, basically, our, to the budget now has to do with. So we have somebody that's been coming in, that's been working, functioning as a coach with our newer teachers, has been going in, observing, providing feedback, and then, we've been doing that for all of the new teachers coming into the building. It's been really beneficial. Teachers that have had, have worked with, with the coach, have actually expressed interest in staying with him if they could. So that's been really beneficial. And we also have teachers that are getting stipends for basically doing what we call TSC, which is basically they're working with groups of students at the high school level now that are, that are struggling academically. They're tracking their grades. They're coordinating with their teachers. They're helping them. So we're trying to do it basically to help, as sort of like as an intervention, as an academic intervention as well, to help some of our most struggling students.
And I think you should add onto that, the need to support early teachers has never been more critical. The market for teachers, if you read the paper, is very real. You know, when I started this position, if we had an English position open, I'd have it over 100 applicants. And you had to, you know, pick up, pick up a stack, so to speak, and now that number is falling almost down to single digits when we have. Maybe not so much for English, but other types of positions. You really need to support teacher burnout. We lose most, we don't lose, the profession loses most teachings in the first three years. So we're investing in the future, keeping good people on. So I think, you know, it's not a lot of money overall, but I think that's one of the things we're looking at, that we'll put that program in using S money to support those teachers, especially supporting them when it was a very, you know, we were in a kind of, teaching was in a crisis, going through COVID and coming out of COVID. So it's good to give them that extra support. So that's my sales pitch on that.
One more thing with the AD/PE teacher position is that it will allow us to offer some additional PE, health, athletic-related classes as well, right? You're talking about adding a sports medicine.
Sports management and sports management, we're looking to add, we're looking to add. So the current, two of the current PE teachers are looking to teach those, we're looking to add. So the AD is gonna be functioning as a part-time phys ed teacher as well. It's gonna be picking up about one and a half classes per semester. It's gonna be helping out teaching middle school PE as well, which is gonna be great because even, because oftentimes we've had to fill those roles with non-PE teachers. And it would be great to have somebody that's licensed to do the enforcement.
And just for perspective, I'm a teacher and a coach in Amherst and observe what the athletic director does there. And when this was brought up, I did not think it was a good idea to have the athletic director as a part-time teacher. I thought that that responsibility would be too much. That was pushed back again to try to save the budget a little bit, but it's a job that requires late nights. They're here all night, every day for a variety of games. And there's a lot of pressure on it. Safety and liability are really important. So I respect the position that Darius and Shelley took about having to try to balance the PE teacher and athletic director. But for full disclosure and in all conversation, it was discussion about it really should be a full-time position.
Kind of don't want to ask anything else. Any other questions or comments?
With regard to, as Phil Cantor pointed, you know, the dusty funding formula, especially with outliers like Paul and Incom that skew the funding and the perception. Is there a formal bill that has been proposed for the Massachusetts Legislature? Or if not, are you working with other rural meetings to put that forth? Because if it is, I would make a motion that we'll start with Conway to endorse it and move it up the ladder, start speaking to her, get something going.
Yeah, so the question was regarding, you know, what's going on legislatively regarding chapter 70.
You know, Jessica's behind it.
What's that?
So you know that Jessica's behind that poll, in case you need backup.
Yes. So the, I will say, I attend a lot of meetings regarding, with state legislators, legislators, and other, you know, professionals within, constituents within the, not constituents, but people work with the state legislature developing the budgets. They aren't gonna touch chapter 70. It's too, it's got too many bandages on it, I think, for them to open it up right now. Especially right now, the way the economic climate is. Right now, we're putting a lot of our cards into rural aid, and Mrs. is referring to Jessica, serves as the chair of Sunderland. It's been a big part of trying to work advocacy for getting the rural aid bill to be hired and be funded at 60 million instead of 15 million. Right now, there's a setback there. As you may know, the state's in a financial shortfall right now. And so everybody's trying to get some of those dollars. So, but that's where we are seeing probably in the future that that, we want to get that rural aid so that we can depend upon it. We can use that to offset the budget. If we can use rural aid to offset the budget annually, that, that piece of the pie will grow to almost probably forty percent. Will be funded by the state if we use that directly. The problem is that we can't guarantee it from year to year, so we haven't used it in that way. So we're going to be using it this year as a way to offset the debt. And then we're going to be looking at, I'm talking about Frontier now. And then next year, you know, we'll be looking at using that, hopefully it'll come in at least the same as this year, which is short of two hundred thousand. We can maybe use it to offset the budget. At the elementary, they're already, they're using it multiple different ways at the four schools. You have to attend one of those meetings there. So there is talk about looking at, at the funding formula as to help harmless. So maybe they'll look at chapter seventy and help harmless differently because the amount of schools that are affected similar to us. In some schools, they've been being gone, lost one, so they're going to be in with a deficit in the way because of inflation. So there is talk about that. I don't know, Justin, do you know if there's any, any traction on that? Tract, traction on that?
There's no new news since last week. There was a bill specifically about rural schools and rural aid, and it just came out last week from the Joint Committee on Education. They reported favorably on an updated version of the bill that took out the rural aid and took out full regional transportation reimbursement and took out the Special Education Financing Commission and all of the things that had major money attached. So it's really been weakened. It's, it's no longer really appropriate to call it a rural schools bill. So we haven't, we haven't fully regrouped. We don't know where we're going yet.
Are there any questions, Mass delegates, that serve in that committee?
Oh, that, that, oh, on that committee, there was Smitty Pignotelli from Southern Berkshire County, and he is not running for reelection. There is nobody else from Western Mass serving on the Joint Committee on Education.
And I will say, both Natalie, Natalie Blake and Joe Grumhorm are completely understand rural aid in the financing of schools. And they are a hundred percent pushing for the rural aid bill and behind it. They are so willing for it. They tend, we're crossing paths at so many of these meetings. So they have been doing their best, but, you know, they oversee dozens of towns versus Eastern Mass where they have the population, so.
They have really stepped up to try to find short-term fixes, so they are trying to get rural aid increased from the fifteen million that's in the governor's budget. So the rural aid could still go up there trying to get the minimum aid per pupil, the whole harmless, to go from thirty dollars to a hundred dollars per pupil. They've never succeeded in reaching a hundred per year, but they're trying. They're fighting the good fight for short-term solutions and then we'll figure out long-term things.
So the, the breakfast that, or the thing that lost Beacon Hill come to the Berks years in the first week of April, first Saturday in April, I think, the chair of the Joint Committee on Education is going to be there. And there is a belief, at least from one of our state senators, that there is a potential to get that formula tweaked to, to leave it revenue-neutral, but to reduce the amount that is, that goes from, that comes from the income and increase the amount that comes from property value. That the revenue-neutral things tend to be easier for Eastern Mass to digest.
All right, I dare say any other comments or questions? Do you have anything on there? Really quick, we're going to close the public hearing on the proposed budget for fiscal year twenty-five. We will be back on Thursday to vote on that, but now we will open seven fifteen for notes.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Yes, we should. Yeah. Thank you, everybody from the Finance Committee, both for your support. Or also for attending and listening to everything that Shelley's presented. And Shelley, thank you so much for all of the work that you do, not just to present at these kinds of meetings, but also to make sure that we all understand what it is that we're doing here. All right. My only concern in that break was that, we got a student on here, but Addison, if you can hang on for five minutes, take a quick break and be right back. Yes.
I have got missed here. Yeah, so am I making the minutes like stop and then we start for Thursday? Or am I doing two different minutes for today and Thursday?
No, it's, we posted it as one, so do it as one. It's just the public hearing gets closed as that agenda item. And then we're opening up the regular meeting.
Let me just clarify because Steve's asking.
Well, just see Thursday.
Yes, that's okay. It's entirely separate.
Okay.
So gentlemen.
So I would close this, this one down and do another one Thursday. Sorry.
All right. I need a motion to review and approve the minutes of February thirteenth, twenty twenty-four.
So who second?
I'm David. Still updated? Oh, yeah. You fell off the big screen, you're on the little screen. We have two folks who want to try to move around on the agenda. One, Addison, are you still with us? Oh, bless your heart. Thank you for hanging in there. That was a bit longer than one in thirty minutes. Go for it. Give us your updates.
Hi, I'm sorry. I'm going to keep this quick. We don't really have too much that we've been doing recently. We're still working on the students' faculty basketball game. And we've definitely been getting into that a lot. I, I think that's generally about it. We've been doing a lot of, we are, for like, I'm sorry. This week, actually, me and another student are going to a Massachusetts Student Council conference. We've been promoting a lot of those, and I think that they are becoming more of a thing in Student Council. And I think students have been, like, joining these a lot, more often. I'm sorry, hang on. Yeah, I don't think we've been doing too much, like, from too much more than last month. We've definitely been getting into the basketball game a lot more, though.
Great. And when's that basketball game?
That basketball game is on April fourth, I believe. Let me check. Hang on. It's April sixth.
April sixth, all right. Mark your calendars. Great.
Thank you.
Enjoy the conference. It's fun to just share thoughts with everybody else and learn from other groups. Thank you, Addison.
Thank you.
And we have Christine.
Christine, you're going to go first?
Just join right here?
We're trying to introduce.
I can, yeah, Christine. So Christine is our community outreach coordinator. This is, so she started working with us last year. She started with us full-time this year. She's been doing a fantastic job, so she basically has, helps out a lot with our Innovative Pathways program in addition to other things. So she's going to be talking tonight about innovative pathways and what we've been doing and what we brought to the school and what she's been able to help coordinate as well. And I just, I couldn't say, I can't say enough great things about her. So thank you so much for being here tonight, Christine, and thank you for all the hard work that you've been doing with the Innovative Pathways program. We really appreciate it. So.
So I'm Christine Wu. I am the Community Outreach Coordinator. It's kind of a mouthful, but my job is to go out and create relationships with businesses in the community to enhance programs here. I work with two programs. I work with the Special Ed Vocational Program, so kids in the Special Ed program, if they want vocational experience before they leave school, I help them find internships or job placements. I'm also the coordinator for programs in the Innovation Pathways Program. I bring in guest speakers, organize field trips, and get kids the internships they need to finish their program. I believe you guys got the brochures last time that explained what Innovation Pathways is. I'll give you a brief overview and then tell you where we're at with it. It's funded through DESI, and basically DESI and the Department of Labor took a look at the blueprint, the labor blueprint for Massachusetts, and identified a couple of years ago, five tracks of in-demand businesses in Massachusetts where the most growth and the most need for employees now and in the coming years is. I believe they've added two tracks to it recently. So I think there's seven tracks that high schools can apply for altogether. We have two of them. We have advanced manufacturing and engineering, and we have healthcare and social sciences. Kids will complete combination of classwork and an internship to complete the program. I'll tell you a little bit about the classes. They offer, we offer technical classes and advanced classes. They have to take two technical classes and they have to take two advanced classes. And if you'd like to know a little bit more about what those are, they're in here, I won't bore you with reading them all out. But like computer aided design programming, FabLab, these are our technical classes. The advanced classes for advanced manufacturing and engineering, physics, advanced computer science, regular physics, biotechnology. So they take two technical and two advanced classes, but they're of course welcome to take anything else on the menu to fill out their learning. In healthcare and social sciences, some of the technical classes include first aid, CPR, first health aid trainer. Obviously, the advanced classes, you've got your AP Bio, AP Chemistry, AP Anatomy. So once the kids finish their technical and advanced classes, they're eligible for their internship. Those will primarily take place in the spring of their senior year. There are a few exceptions because there are some companies who would like those students in the summer. And if a student can swing that, we're going to try to make that work for them. In addition to the classes, we bring in a lot of guest speakers. One of the things we're trying to do is keep this very experiential, very hands-on. The teachers we have working in these programs are great. We have a lot of equipment that the kids are learning to run and use. We have a laser cutter in the lab. We have three D printers. We have this giant CNC wood router. In the healthcare labs, we have full-size mannequins that are interactive, hospital beds, blood pressure equipment, CPR dummies. We're really well-equipped. But in addition to that, we bring in guest speakers who enhance these classes, professionals in the field. Some of the ones who have come in in the past couple of weeks are the aquatics director for Northampton, and he talks about how CPR and first aid is put into use in the field and careers with, that you can use with CPR and first aid. We've had people come in to talk about medical lab work, medical technician work, and what it takes to be a lab worker. He brings in blood sample pictures and helps kids identify, you know, who's got the most white blood cells, things like that. So it's very experiential. We have a growing panel of guest speakers. We have over thirty-five businesses involved in one way or another with manufacturing and engineering and another thirty-five involved with healthcare. If you're curious who's on our list, who, what businesses are working with us, you can take a peek. I'll just kind of, you can share them, pass them out to viewers. We are always open to suggestions of more businesses who might offer internships or speakers or tours. We take two tours a semester. As you can see, a lot of variety. We take them to, with manufacturing and engineering, we take them to builders, to manufacturers in the community, technical companies. With the healthcare, we have two in-house events that are big. Some of you who are in the school may have seen a helicopter land here last semester. The Lifestar helicopter lands and gives the healthcare students a tour of the helicopter, tells them about job opportunities in that field, lets them get their hands in there. South County EMS comes over. They let them tour the ambulance, again, talk to them about careers, how to get into the, what's required in terms of education for these careers. We're going to be doing a simulation, so to speak. We'll have a student volunteer to be John Ewfel out of the tree, and what does EMS do when they arrive? They'll actually describe how they would check him for concussion, dizziness, broken bones. How would they load him? What, what can they do in the ambulance? These are highly interactive and they've been very popular. We've gotten a lot of good feedback from the kids. One of the favorite ones for the manufacturing and engineering is a trip to UMass. And they get to go to their three D fabrication labs, their maker spaces, their computer science department, their design-build center, learn a little bit about what careers they could plan for by going to those programs and seeing what sort of equipment is out there. The healthcare also goes to Bay State Medical. We have a mock patient admission program. Kids break up into groups of fives and they'll get a fakey patient. Mr. Jones is sixty-eight. He has a history of diabetes. He injured his hip, et cetera, et cetera. He's going to go to P T. One of the students actually gets to be Mr. Smith, and P T will show the students what they would do for this person. He's having pain. He might have a broken hip. He's going to go to the radiology department. So we all go to radiology. We see what would be done in terms of X-rays or MRIs. We got to watch a live MRI. He needs surgery. They gloved up and gowned up, went into a surgical suite, learned about the different careers in the surgical suite, what education's required to do those jobs, et cetera. They got to play around with the tools with a mannequin. So we try to keep it as interactive as possible and very engaging. It's been very, very popular. We've had a lot of good feedback about our program so far. We have kids, in the manufacturing and engineering, we have six enrolled at this time, and we have four enrolled in healthcare. We have a lot of other students who are kind of on the border of signing up, so it is growing. It, it is, as I said, a very popular program, very hands-on. We've gotten a lot of good feedback. We've had some interesting comments. We always do a review at the end of these special events. And it, it's really been inspiring to see how these kids react to seeing what they're learning in the classroom in action in these factories. When we go out to a place for a field trip, I provide that company with the vocabulary and the curriculum of what's going on that semester so they can integrate it into that field trip. And it's amusing, when we went over to Pelican last fall, to see the kids as these people are talking about their design process, production and testing, the kids are all nodding because, yep, I remember learning that, yep. And they're pointing to their teacher like, yep, you told us this. And it was kind of cute that the next day, Kevin Murphy, who is computer science and computer aid design teacher, he said, one of the students came in saying, I'm so psyched for class today. This is going to be great. And he thought, all right, what are you buttering me up for? Do you want to leave early? What's the deal here? And she said, no. She goes, I was so fascinated by what they design over there and what comes out of there. She goes, I can't wait to see what I can create in here today. So it was really, it's really been an effective tool. Kind of a little side story, an interesting effect of the healthcare tour of the helicopter and the ambulance. We figured as long as they're here, we let the special ed kids come out and see these vehicles. There was one young man who has had an extreme fear of doctors and anything medical. He's high on the autism spectrum. He got to tour these on his own terms rather than being the patient or the client all the time. I don't know how many of you know much about autism, but they don't engage in pretend play. They're very logical, very, whatever's in front of them is in front of them. He went home and started pretend playing with an ambulance, which he had never done in his life. He's eighteen years old. And his mother was in tears because something moved him to try pretend play. He also wanted to know more. He was asking more questions. This experience of getting out there on his own terms opened a door for him and reduced some fears. I was able to bring in a medical doctor to the special ed department to let these kids play doctor. Brought in the stethoscope, blood pressure cups, and I forget what they're called, the otoscopes, whatever they are for the eyes and ears.
That's it.
Is that it? And they were able to play doctor for the day, get, you know, honorary title for the day and take the blood pressure of their teachers, and it reduced some fears. So it was sort of a side effect of bringing more experiential learning into the school that we didn't bargain for. But it was really pretty cool that that happened. If you have questions, if you don't have, if you didn't see the brochures, we do have some. I'll leave them here. You can take a peek at them, see what the courses are. And like I said, those are the lists of the businesses involved.
So I do have a question.
Yeah, absolutely.
The one, I see you have someone coming in that's vet and animal science.
Yes.
And if there is one curriculum offering that this school could do, just from, because every year, we always have it, in Conway at least, we always have one to two kids that just to study that go, end up going to Smith-Boeck because Franklin Tech has historically not offered that. And when your kid in your town goes to Smith-Boeck and it's not your tech, that, that choice. that, that choice costs the town over forty thousand dollars a year. But intuition and transportation. So that would be a great thing to, because that, that need is always there. Year after year, there's always one, two, three or more going for just that. And it costs us a fortune.
We saved a girl from going out. She is going to be veterinary technician and possibly go into vet school. I've already worked out an internship for her at Deerfield Veterinary Service over by Yankee Candle, not the emergency one. So yeah, we're, to the best of our ability, keeping kids who are interested in some sort of healthcare or social science counseling, rehab counseling, engineering, manufacturing, keeping those kids here to get their hands-on experience here. The great part about this program is it really is good for any level kid, whether you're the kid who wants to go into the factory and press the buttons when you had to get out of high school, you're going to be the kid entering the program in and running that machine. Or whether you want to design things and whether you want to, you know, be the engineer. This prepares you to go off to engineering school. So it's, it works for both ends of the spectrum. It's great because it does provide them this hands-on experience. It's a great resume builder, college application builder. And to be frank, how many of us are doing jobs that we first went into college to study? No hands. It gives these kids a sense of, is this something I really want to do? Is this a good fit for me? I know so many people who've paid thousands and thousands of dollars to universities only to get through with that study, take the job and say, I don't really like this. This is a great way for them to get their fingers wet. They don't have to go into this career, but it's a great way for them to test out, is this a good avenue for me? Any other questions?
What's your, what's your capacity? You talked about your current enrollment. What's the capacity of both programs?
I don't know if we have established capacity.
It would, it could go up to however many students can fit in a class, if you think about it. So, you know, it could be fifteen, twenty, twenty-five. So yeah. I know a lot of students are really, I mean, I'm assuming too, I'm just looking back at them. I didn't even realize the new math that's back there. I'm sure that that was done on Dan Murphy's room. So it's like, a lot of kids are taking advantage of it. They really enjoy it.
And I'll say from my parental role, I do some work with the elementary kids, bringing them over for math and science best. And it's been such a great experience for the kids in sixth grade to come over and kind of get a sense of what the opportunities may be.
That's great, that's great. Yeah, we're doing our best to get the word out around the school. It's a new thing. We're at the end of our second year. So I will say that no one is in an internship yet. No one has reached that point yet. That'll all happen next year. But it's going very well. There's growing excitement. And as kids are taking these classes and they're catching on to, what is innovation pathways? And like, why would I want to do this versus just take some of the classes? The big thing is the internship to get that experience. And also, just on their end, we're going to have, you know, graduation court and a specialization line on their diploma, which they have, you know. But yeah, fantasy, I would love to see a window in the FabLab for the printer to run and people in the hallway can see it. You know, so that kids could see what's really going on in there. We've had kids do some fascinating projects. I'm mind-blown by some of the things the kids are doing. We have a kid coming up with an alternative engine. We have one that's redesigned a golf club head. I mean, they're really fascinating kids that are really getting deep into this and loving it. And it's, it's been a great offering. And I hope more kids will catch on to this and sign up as, as work gets out. Any other questions?
I have one other comment that is personal to me. I would prefer that you take off the apostrophe S on the PAs that are on your list. It's not how the profession is spelled. The physician assistant. There's no apostrophe S on there.
Where am I seeing, in the healthcare?
Tim King. Will appreciate that. Appropriate title, physician.
Okay, yeah, okay.
He's just a physician assistant.
Oh, okay. So he's a physician assistant. Okay, physician assistant.
Yep.
All right, good to know. Just so you know, this is my database.
That's fine.
But that's, I'm glad to know that. So actually, when I introduce him, that I'm saying it properly. I am glad to know that. This list is ever-growing, but I encourage you, if you do know businesses in the community that are manufacturers, engineers, civil engineers, what have you, healthcare professionals that might be interested in helping us expand our program and deepen the learning, I would love to have those names. It's been a really great response from the community, as you can see. As mentioned, these are high-demand careers. Hospitals are desperate for employees, for a path for people to go into medical work. Manufacturers always have openings. These are, these are careers where they really need employees. So they're more than happy to be working with us in one capacity or another, either with tours, guest speakers or internships to help cultivate these kids. But we're always looking for more, so keep it in mind.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Nice job.
And pardon me for blubbering through it. I don't want to keep you guys forever, so I was trying to rush it.
You didn't blubber, you didn't blubber at all. You're very good.
Thank you.
This is where you're referring to marrying what's going on with the budget with what's going on at the school as well, right?
It's hard, there's a lot going on, you know? That's important to some people. The musical next week is more important than other people. Basketball game last night, you know, really gets.
Some people, they want to do the numbers.
Yeah, I don't know if you do like a greatest hits, like two-minute video slideshow. You've got to think some, like yours, right? All right. There you go. There you go. All right. Financial statement and warrants. That's you again, Sheldon, ready for, you want me to skip over some things or?
No, I can be ready.
All right.
I have nothing for FY23 financial statements. I didn't even send you the reports, so that's my apologies because.
It's probably twenty-four.
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four, you're right. It's not twenty-three. See, I'm tired now. Seven forty-four. And I've been journaling a little bit this week. But anyway, I do have warrant total for you. Twenty-eight warrants were signed totaling two million, seven hundred, twenty-six thousand, five hundred, nine dollars and seventy cents. And I already put that in the warrant.
They were assigned this one.
Thank you. But we are going to add budget discussion back here, right?
Right.
Yeah.
So we're going to stick with that FY25 conversation to follow up.
Want to circle back on any comments from the public here that have a discussion?
Good question I had. One of the, so school choice, if someone from Deerfield chooses to go to Tech, that impacts them specifically? Now, if someone's school choice is to Frontier.
We, who's that?
Deerfield.
No, city town.
So Tech is not a school choice school. Tech, you pay tuition to go to. So the town pays full tuition of whatever the cost to attend.
I'm not going to say whether they go or not.
Which, let me rephrase that. So they get assessed based on enrollment from your town because Deerfield is part of, and Conway and Sutherland are part of their member towns, just like they're part of our number towns. For Smith-Boege, what Phil was saying is we pay the full cost for a student to go there. But in the end, it ends up working out to be totally about the same amount of money. So that's not a choice. That's totally different. School choice and Tech enrollments are entirely different pieces. You have to apply to go to Tech. You still apply for school choice, but it's not the same process.
It's not the same, but I mean, you follow the fundamentals. They have to pay the dollars for the outgoing student versus, like, from a global perspective in our community, we get, we get funding for students coming here of school choice, but it's not specific to town, right?
No, so what happens with the assessment from the state? Is the state automatically takes choice money from the town? It's deducted from their revenue. But the town actually pays Tech directly, like they pay Frontier directly. It's the same thing that happens with us. They get assessed by Franklin Tech for the number of students that attend.
But the game, you're, you're correct to say that the game is different. You know, why is each student worth a certain amount of money and then gets sent to whatever, whatever they choose? I don't know if you're kind of going that way.
I was just wondering, the dollars pooled, if it's, so if it's school choice dollars, is it hitting Frontier? So the dollars that are coming in hit Frontier. Or if, let's say, the school, kids are school choice, they go to Conway to go to, I don't know, where? Does Conway pay or does Frontier Regional pay?
At the elementary school, Conway pays. Frontier pays.
So that's a difference to me. Deerfield pays for Tech, whereas if someone's school choice somewhere else, Frontier's paying.
Right, so if someone goes to Greenfield.
Yes.
If someone, if a Deerfield resident chooses to go to school at Greenfield and gets sent through school choice, Frontier is assessed that five thousand dollars. But if a Deerfield resident chooses to go to Franklin Tech, the town pays that.
Because the towns are in agreement with Franklin Tech.
Just like we have a regional agreement, they have another.
And it's not like you could say, oh geez, that's, you know, we've got to negotiate. There's no negotiation with Franklin Tech. It's what, this is the number you're going to pay.
Versus technically, they give you a budget and you guys vote on it every year at town meeting. Just nobody, no one puts a hold on that one.
Correct me if I'm wrong, it's twenty-six towns. And if you're the one that doesn't want to vote for it, too bad. It's just like us. If we have three out of the four, the lone soldier's out.
But the other thing about them too is that their school committee is so large and no single town has more than like a five or six percent voting share that they effectively have no financial pushback ever on anything from their school committee. And the other, the other thing too is that, that we have a tradition of returning some of the extra E and D, extra, some of the E and D that's not spent to the towns to lower their assessment. Franklin Tech does not do that. They looked at me like I was from Mars when I suggested that they do that. And in fact, when you listen to them give their presentations, they actually look at E and D like it's Christmas and they just, they go shopping and they get like stuff that, they expand their offerings that they weren't even thinking. Let's buy a helicopter. They do that with E and D. And, you know, so that's.
I don't want to get too far into the right and left side of the budget, but do you want to talk a little bit more about what Julie was saying?
Yes, let's talk about that. So Julie and I wrote, and Darius and I earlier in the week with this question. Can we change the hundred thousand dollar assessment of capital over to a debt assessment and not assess them for capital? The reasoning behind that is because debt-excluded funds can result in a tax increase of one time. And as she explained, it's already been approved when each of the towns approved that funding years ago for one point eight million dollars. So it does not have to go back out for vote of the community. The town just has to figure out how to fund it. Whereas with capital, that would have to be a warrant article and they would have to fund it, raise an appropriate free cash or, you know.
So instead of, so what we will be doing is instead of paying down a hundred thousand dollars of the debt assessment that we had planned to do, you know, a hundred thousand that we were going to assess the town, we will use school choice. I'll just pick a final. We'll use school choice, a hundred thousand there. Instead of the debt assessment, we'll get the debt assessment of the town and we'll use a hundred thousand school choice to pay for the fire panel. There'll be no warrant gone to the town. We'll just assess them a larger amount, so the forty thousand, so charge them a hundred and forty thousand dollars worth of debt assessment.
So Keith, you had your hand, you, you beat me to the hand up like about ten seconds.
Does that have to be applicable to all four towns or would it be done individually? How does that affect the other?
We would do all four towns. So give them all the, same amount. It's the same bill, it's just how they can pay for it. It gives them more leeway paying for it. She's correct, it gives them more leeway without having to raise, put that against the two and a half.
Is this a precedent for the future? Like, is this going to happen more often than not now?
Well, we're in the unique opportunity that we have a debt assessment that we're, that we're going to be paying down debt assessments like that in the future. So we have the ability to do that this year because there's a debt assessment.
The only thing I wish we would have done today, when we talked about paying, correct me if I'm wrong, paying the interest, the four hundred thousand dollar interest thing that we're taking care of, not, we're not assessing, assessing the town's four hundred thousand from the loans. You know, I think, I think they should have known that we spent four hundred thousand dollars of our money to take, take care of that, correct?
Well, it'll be nine hundred.
Nine hundred thousand.
Three thousand, but yes, but I think.
But see, that's something they should have known about.
We've had enough conversations.
You're picking over a hundred thousand dollars over here, but we also took nine hundred thousand.
So they discussed that we've sent, we met with the town administrators.
That committee that comes up with, that came up with that one.
Right. So right, so the town, we met with, we met, one of the represented on that committee that made the decision in the select board. We met with the town administrators and we sent the slideshow with the town administrators to send to both finance and select board. So they've seen the full presentation about what we are doing. So they knew about it. And Keith was right, like, we probably should have, Keith mentioned it in between to me. He said, you guys probably should have gone a little bit further. It was a chance to talk about it more because it is pretty significant. So, like, Sheldon wasn't already doing enough. You know what I mean? So like, we probably, you know, we could have done that, but there's only, I mean, it was, it was an hour. It was, you know, it was, you know, it was an hour and twenty minutes.
I think they should, I think they should have known, meaning.
They, they should know, but.
But it wasn't the last presentation that you just gave. I mean, just, but they, it's not like they.
Have you guys been to any of the towns yet? So you got to know the shit out of that.
Right. And Deerfield chose to come to us last year. So we, last time.
The thing about, what, what the finance committee member from Deerfield said is a reasonable, is a reasonable request. And it makes sense from the point of view of ease of getting the budget passed. But the way it was brought to this school committee, it would have been far better for the school if the select board made that formal request. And the select board incurred the political risk and the political wrath at town meeting for making that request rather than setting the school committee up and the school for them having to defend that choice. Because it was never actually properly made by the town. It was just one right here. And, you know, to the extent that, that a debt exclusion is viewed by some, and you always hear this at every town meeting, as a gimmick to get around prop two and a half. And I've heard that used over and over again at all our towns. That, you know, it's, it's now, it's the school that will be seen as doing that rather than the town of Deerfield making that formal request, which is what it should have been. And so.
Yeah.
Yes, the, the one who needs the benefit is Deerfield.
So right. You know, and Phil, you're right. And you're right, that's the downside of it, is that someone can say, you're sitting around that. We are, instead of putting a warrant item on for a hundred thousand dollars, we instead are just doing capital, the, the assessment, the capital assessment cost of.
Start it approved.
Debt assessment of a hundred and forty thousand dollars. It's a little bit cleaner. I mean, it can be easily argued on town floor. If we have to argue on town floor, we can explain why. And if they don't like it, they can let us know. They're still, they have to pay for it either way. It's not even a choice. Because they've already agreed to that debt assessment.
The other thing with the capital is we don't have final engineered specs on the fire alarm panel. We don't have a opinion of practical cost yet from the engineer. So I suppose this allows us more time and, you know, we would, Frontier would have had to cover that bill anyway, but, you know, we're not.
You're saying additional reasons why this is a good idea?
Yes, I think it gives us more time with the capital project too, to be able to fully fund it properly versus just assessing a hundred thousand. What if it comes back at four hundred thousand, which it shouldn't? But what if it did, you know, and then?
We're going to have a lot of fun, Mars.
Yeah, yeah.
That's a really good point. That's a really good point. Well, the only, I think when we were talking about before, you know, setting a precedent of having no capital requests whatsoever. Like, I think we're trying to avoid that when we were discussing it before. Because, you know, every year is a little bit. Now they get into habit of not expecting any every year. We're not always going to have those funds available. So that, I think that was one of the reasons why we had it in there in the first place. So that is another potential downside, but I was saying it's.
Are the other conflict of, under the understanding that they weren't going to have a capital assessment at all?
No, they, they saw what was, everyone has seen what was presented tonight, where it was general fund, capital, debt. No, they, they saw what was, everyone has seen what was presented tonight, where it was general fund, capital, debt.
Second half of lunch.
So after, great, just like, yeah, no, sorry. After we, after the February meeting, we send that complete packet, because we've gotten pushback from the finance committee and select boards that they don't wanna come here and be surprised at the public forum what the numbers are. So as soon as you guys decide what the numbers are, we send them all, all the paperwork. So they have, had a full budget too, of all the line items as well. So they knew exactly, um, what we were assessing them for capital issue.
And it won't change the assessment. It just changes how the town pays for it. We will still be assessing.
It's like the tennis courts, you know, they could pay anywhere they want. They could pay it with their cash, they could pay it with their CPA money. I mean, I guess it's just same thing with this. I mean, it's either debt or just pay it.
And so there, there's one other point too that I'm making on behalf of a, a finance committee member from my town that couldn't be here on, on the thing tonight. That the belief that it's, that it's actually, it might not be the best decision to retire all the debt. Um, just from the point of view that what you wanna do is budgetary speaking, you wanna have new debt ready to come in when the old debt's getting retired, so that the budget impact is minimized. When you retire the debt, it comes off the budget, and then when you need to borrow more, it's that much harder to get approved because it has a much more, it has much larger outsized influence.
Correct, and that, and that's why we did.
No, go ahead.
And that's why we did a, a warrant for the fire panel this year that we said, well, if you do have a hundred thousand dollars, at about where we were last year in what was the debt, well, it was capital, same amount of capital per year. Um, and that would've been eaten up by the debt assessments. We're asking, we have a general budget and we're asking outside of that for either debt or capital has been around the same amount. It's a little bit.
And don't forget, we still have funds available in that we haven't fully spent the one point eight million. We still have the parking lot to tackle. The four hundred and five that we're paying off of the roof could be reallocated for the parking lot. So there's likely more debt coming, whether it's, you know, next year or two years will be.
And the capital, the capital committee's gonna have to make that decision. That's gonna be the next thing on the list. The capital committee is like, what do you wanna do with the debt? Um, is it more appropriate to close it up? Do we keep it open and finish the parking lot, which was originally part of that?
And we have three more phases of the roof. So there's still plenty of significant projects to be funded that will likely require us to borrow because we are using a significant level of our reserves to do what we're gonna do this year, paying off the debt and funding the roof phase one ourselves. And these two other projects now, right? Cause it'll be the full fire panel and the full building management system.
I sounded way too jolly earlier.
And do we need a vote to?
So the committee needs to vote to, it needs to vote a number moving forward to bring to the, bring to the vote next week, right? And if it wants to change.
Two days from now.
Two days from now. If you want us to change the wording to move the, uh.
Yeah, we don't have to change the wording. I just need them to, I'll show you guys the assessment on the screen and you'll just.
Yeah, actually, you don't even need to vote that next week. We will move that forward. We'll bring it to the, not next week, in two days. We will break forward the changes as long as that's what you guys wanna do.
But I don't wanna throw another wrench in it. The other option for the committee to consider, knowing that we've heard from at least one town that there is financial hardship, is, is there any additional funding sources? And Julie did say that at, at the end. Is there anything else the school committee can do to help us out? You know, I'm sure they'd rather have their assessments reduced overall versus just this change of capital.
But all the other towns are, I mean, transportation, we're gonna have extra money for transportation at the elementary school, so.
Right, that is definitely something to consider.
This is just one ball fire right here. We get to the elementary school.
The capital is direct dollar for dollar vote. So if, if you, if there isn't, if they wanna reduce, reducing the capital request is gonna help the towns directly. You can't, the amount you have to reduce to change the assessment, you, you can't, you, you, not only is you got, you know, you gotta change by two hundred thousand dollars.
No, the largest impact will be to Deerfield, but say we took another hundred thousand dollars of school choice money and paid that instead of assessing them a hundred thousand on debt and only assess them forty thousand. A hundred thousand, Deerfield's portion of that is forty, you know, forty-eight percent, whatever it was like before. So they're gonna see the most significant relief if we were to do that. I'm just throwing another option out there, whereas if we're talking about truly giving relief to the towns, especially knowing what's happening with transportation at all the elementary schools.
And we talked, and I think we talked about it during our capital meeting, correct me if I'm wrong, about taking another hundred thousand dollars, correct me if I'm wrong, to help with assessment, but it wouldn't help that much even if we took two hundred thousand. I think when we were talking about projects and the money that we have.
If we're gonna, if we're gonna reduce, if we're gonna reduce, we do the town, we do it under the capital assessment or the, or the interest. Uh, that, that directly will be dollar for dollar savings. If you try to reduce the budget, the amount you have to reduce to overcome the assessment isn't, it's very difficult.
The fire panel's only a hundred thousand dollars, correct? About a hundred thousand dollars?
The total project is gonna be about two hundred.
Okay, if you were to be, say, to have.
So let's look at what the change is. So if we were to pull off a hundred thousand dollars, let's just say from debt, since we're talking about moving into debt anyway. Currently, our overall assessment, it was three point eight three, am I remembering that right? It would bring us down to two point seven five overall. It's a significant difference. It doesn't impact each of the towns in the same way. I can't find the slide here. But when you're talking about our overall increase, it's almost a percentage. Three, three point eight three to two point seven five if we were to shave a hundred thousand dollars off. Which would change, so it's not a huge impact for Conway. Conway would go from eighty-five to sixty-eight. Deerfield would go from eighty-five to thirty-six. Sunderland would go from ninety-six to seventy-two, and Wakeley would go from ninety to seventy-nine. So twenty-ish thousand dollars for three of the four elementary schools, which is about how much of the transportation increase?
It's probably, it's close.
Half of it. So there's so many things that are happening.
Given, given those numbers, uh, we love Deerfield, but not that much.
This one's a little bit out there and we had a conversation about it.
It's all Bill, Bill, Bill. Only you would say that, Bill.
So I know there's, there is some brain drain as well tonight.
Yeah.
We can, what we can do is, I'm gonna recommend, you can decide whether you go off this recommendation or not, is ask Shelley to put that proposal together for Thursday. Thursday, you know, we have to have the meeting within forty-five minutes, we have back-to-back meetings on night. Um, but we're gonna, it's gonna be an online meeting as well. Uh, so what we could propose, this is A, the original, this is A, have that short discussion. It also gives you some time to kinda think things over. Or you can ask, we can try to square this out tonight. I'm just kinda putting it out there because Shelley can get it lined up so you can see it visually about what it is rather than rattling out the numbers. Or maybe people still.
I don't think I understand where the money would come from.
We would use additional school choice funds.
And what are we using those for now?
So our, our school choice balance, after all of the things that were already improved at the last meeting, which included hang down, debt, the building management system, and part of the fire panel. And yes, we do have expenses that we, we need to maintain school choice money, but my projection was that we would have about, um, one point two million dollars in reserves still available. So, you know, say I'm off a little bit on that, maybe we're around a million.
But also just for clarity's sake, I think we've talked about this previously, that even though that sounds like a large number, there's a, a few, uh, high needs people who could potentially make that number go down relatively quickly.
There's definitely always some risk that out of district leasing could come up.
But the positive side, it's a one-year cost. We're gonna pay that off and you won't have that cost next year. So we're not offsetting the budget with school choice, we're offsetting the, the capital or debt, school choice. So it's a one-year cost and that's the best way to use school choice.
So I think that maybe, not shutting down the conversation at all, but it might be a good idea to come with some fresh graphics.
I just know that you have a chance to kinda review and that kinda stuff and be able to show it. It also, it's no rush decision.
I can do a refresher of what all of our excess funds are going to pay for, what that, um, estimated balance is, what it would look like with the change, unless we're not interested in reducing at all and move forward.
Well, only one of the towns has said anything to us, and that's Deerfield.
Yeah, I, I hear that, but the towns have not seen, I mean, the, the school committees that are happening tomorrow, Thursday, and then Tuesday and Wednesday of next week, all are going to see a two percent jump because of the transportation. So they are all going to be like, Shelley and I are kind of, you know, tailing one meeting at a time, but it, it's like, how are they going to pay down? We're gonna need to actually reduce either any new initiatives or ask the towns for bailout or that kinda thing. So it is one district watching the other district. And we've kind of always, just kept an eye on what's Frontier doing versus the elementary, but all the elementaries are gonna get hit with, they got hit by an eighty percent increase in all four the elementary schools. Deerfield got a hundred and five because they have a flex bus to go to, they have an additional bus that goes up to Eagle Brook. And, cause a full bus can't go up there to pick up.
And I don't believe anyone, any, all of the elementary schools, I believe, are going to be over twelve percent. With very minimal new initiatives, there's not a lot of new requests.
Do they understand the ask, which is that you put together, I guess, those three as-is, right? This is what we presented today, as-is, or one that has us just moving things to debt exclusion? Or getting funds from somewhere else and paying off? That's the, the request that we have for you to bring forward on Thursday? Does that sound like what everybody's?
If that's what.
And there is a net benefit, dollar-wise, from all four towns, not just the Deer, if we do this.
If we reduce it a hundred thousand, yes.
Of school choice funds, which we know aren't gonna dry up because the school choice numbers are going down in the elementary school, so. Can we, can we get a straw vote of who's here and what we think about it? I mean, if we're gonna take a hundred thousand dollars and pay for this panel versus assessing the towns the hundred thousand dollars, why don't we just make a decision, why wait till Thursday night, make a decision, it's a hundred thousand dollars? Do we take it out of it?
My, my immediate reaction is that would be paying off the debt is doing a tremendous favor for the towns. And now I hear basically one town saying, can you do us just a little bit more, which every other town would ask every other senior year. I also heard coming up against a proposition two and a half override, coming from, I've had three of them over the last five or six years, like, well, you know, you might have to do it, but if it does benefit all four towns, then that's something I could support. But if it's just to, to avoid a proposition two and a half override, I mean, like.
But I think, I think that really that gets you out of the dilemma that you were talking about, right? Now this isn't a Prop twenty, two point five skirt, this is, we took care of the issue. And it's kind of a win-win on both sides.
But I did hear Shelley express a preference to sit, to let the, let the numbers marinate inside her computer for a couple of days and.
But this is a difficult discussion.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Inside that box.
But, but so.
Look at each other and talk about this. This is the way to do this, not that way. Wait, like this all.
But the flip side of that is that if the business manager wants a couple of days to, like, run this.
I get it, but it's, maybe I'm being overly simplistic about this, but what it, basically what it amounts to is eleven thousand dollars for Wakeley, twenty-four thousand dollars for Sunderland, forty-eight thousand for Deerfield, and.
Couple of nickels and dimes for Conway.
Whatever, sixteen, eight, whatever percent, whatever your percent is.
Sixteen, forty, eight, yeah, twenty-three and eleven.
That they won't have, that they would not have to pay otherwise, that they could take, they could take the eleven thousand and help offset the, the transportation costs. All of the towns could do this, if that's what they choose to do with the money. We can't tell them what to do with it. But is it that simple? Take a hundred divided by the percentage, and that's what, that's what we're saving. I wanna see the saving from my town, his town, and his town, not just Deerfield, her town. And I tell you, I love the mother town, I really do, but I wanna see this go equitably for everybody, is what you were saying a minute ago. Or because I was pretty jazzed with the plan, with the plan that you guys had. And then Julie comes, comes in with something, okay, fine, Deerfield's got difficulties, I get that. But so does Conway, cause after Tom washed away, and yada, 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 on and on and on we go. If there's a benefit that I can put my finger on, each one of the four towns, I'm okay, but.
I, I also think that Deerfield's a little bit ahead of the game because, one, they did come to the February meeting. So elementary and Frontier, they saw the numbers. Their town meeting is early, so they're ahead of things compared to, um, Wakeley and Conway. And, um, the elementary schools haven't really seen the impact of the transportation. I sent Deerfield and I did send Wakeley packets, but Conway and Sunderland haven't seen what those numbers look like yet. So people may not be in reaction mode as much as Julie is, cause she's already seen it.
I think it is new information, right, the, the transportation thing, and that's from where we were for the recommendation that we had a month ago. And I think it benefits all towns to offset a portion of that if we can. It stretches us a little thinner, a little less comfortable than we wanted to be a month ago, but we have new information now. At both points, it's gonna benefit everybody in that conversation.
And so I, I think your request is an informal, how many of us might be in support of trying to help to offset that hundred thousand? Is that your?
I'll make a motion that we, I'll make a motion right here on the floor. I mean, still have Davey and everybody here. Make a motion to take a hundred thousand out of either E and D or, or school choice to take care of that capital, capital project to help all four towns, cause we got a transportation coming up that's been hurt, all four.
Before you finish that motion, could, could we just hear from Shelley and to add, as to your sense of, ju- ju- just, are, are, cause the, the way that these things work, there's a lot of moving parts to these budgets and, um, you know, you, when, when the person most, most responsible for the preparation of the budget says that they would like a couple of more days, I get concerned about rushing them for real. And so, um, could you just address?
So I do think it is as simple as Bill is saying, that it is, you know, you're deducting those amounts from each of the town and they will see the savings. What I don't wanna rush us on is making the decision without seeing what the impact is to the reserves. And I would love to look at like the roof. And we have projects that we've allocated funding for already. What happens if they come in through the roof, you know? And, and we need more money for the, the fire panel. I said four hundred thousand, that's extreme. I don't think it'll be that high. But what if it's two fifty? And what if the roof is four fifty? And what if the BMS system is another two fifty? It's an uncomfortable position. I'm not saying we can't do it. I just want us to be fully aware of what the numbers are. And based on Chris's question, maybe a refresher on some of the things that we've talked about over the last couple of meetings would be helpful in the decision-making process.
What are you able to do in the next forty hours?
Well, I mean, we have another meeting, so we'll make it happen. It's on the calendar. It is what it is.
I think, I'm, I think in summary to different things, I, I, I agree with Bill. It's good to have this discussion tonight we're having. You know what I mean? Because you're right, you get on the computer and it's just not as good as folks can remember. Um, and so we're having it, but I, I, I do, you're gonna vote it on Thursday either way. And so I think, let's, let's ask any more questions we have on this. I think, I would recommend going back to what Missy had said. Shelley, provide us the three options that we're coming into the next meeting. At that meeting, somebody can move forward one of those options and you, and you can kinda, if you wanna straw vote it, as Bob asked, uh, earlier, to kinda where people are leaning. But at that point in time, you will have at least a summary where we don't come back later on and say, wait a minute, I didn't know that school trace was gonna be under that much money, or these are the other constraints. Then we can kinda give a full summary of, this is the risk we're taking, you know exactly where the numbers stand. And that we, you have all the information making that decision rather than doing that tonight, and you're just gonna rubber stamp it on Thursday. tonight, and you're just gonna rubber stamp it on Thursday, instead of, on Thursday, you make the decision on Thursday, instead of rubber stamping on Thursday with additional information, but be sure Shelley has all your questions tonight.
I don't know how the rest of you guys feel, but you guys were able to make me feel very comfortable with that other plan, so if we just do that again, before Thursday, and make me feel real comfortable, or, I'd be a happy camper.
So we gotta make chocolate chip cookies.
Yeah. That you'll get personally.
Yeah, third, Bill.
Do you wanna proceed with a little bit?
I, I proceeded, but if we're gonna wait until Shelley gives us the three things to talk about Thursday, Thursday, I mean, I'll rescind my, my motion, and just go with the flow and see what happens on Thursday, I mean, that's the best thing probably to do, and I just, I just wanna, we spent, we spent a lot of time on this particular question, we get the three things on Thursday, because we all have a lot of meetings on Thursdays, we just gotta make sure that we have all the questions, and these are our options, let's pick one, then let's make a motion, let's vote on it, and continue on, but if we have more questions, we should probably ask them now.
I think, I think if Shelley comes Thursday and says she feels comfortable with the, the proposed, but moving the hundred thousand dollars, then I think, I'm ready to make it quick, but if she doesn't, I think it'd be longer.
I agree, I mean, I think that it's hard to do it without seeing all the numbers laid out, and I think it sounds like it would make you feel better, and I think it would make me feel better personally, and I don't know about everybody else, to just see the numbers all laid out.
Yeah, why don't I just see them?
I'm in support of it, but...
And you might, you might find that we don't have as much, and we'll just have to go back to square one.
I mean, I kind of feel like it's like buying a car where you're like, it's fine, it's a hundred and ninety-nine a month, and you're like, but the price tag is, right, like, I just wanna see the actual numbers, and don't sell me on a monthly payment, give me an actual, give me the actual numbers, I'm in support of it, but...
The question, oh, so if the budget as presented, you move a hundred thousand, and we keep with three options, or it would be the third?
The third would just be taking the, capital would be zero, and debt would be one forty.
The Julie, the Julie ask?
Yes, yes, which does not change the assessment, so...
But just as for that last part, like, um, if, if there truly is a level of discomfort, I would just, at, when we get to Thursday, I would hope that you would express that clearly and directly.
Well, I will remind you that it's your discomfort, because it's your...
I, I know, I know, but, but...
I'm not taking your discomfort, you and Rob.
And I know it is the school committee's vote and responsibility, but, um, you know, it's, I'm just asking for, like, when, in the, to, to be clear about, um, as opposed to, uh, I don't know, like, the, well, it might, it might, I might be uncomfortable, this might not, or whatever, whatever, but just, yeah.
I got you.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
They're buried in their cookies, right?
Is there any, uh, we can reduce the budget, once we vote, or we can reduce the budget anytime we feel like it.
Correct.
Is there any, there's nothing to prevent us for months from now from reducing the budget by a hundred thousand, and returning it to the balance, when we've all got, you know, the gun is not pointed at you.
There's not for...
Well...
But I suppose that would be the argument for the debt exclusion piece, right?
Well, done on the county and the floor before, the number that was there, we just... There is a, there is a, there is a correction to that, though, however, our, anything that's gonna be on the warrant, we have to let them know.
Right.
And so, in fact, it's already, you know, I gave that, I contacted the town of Deerfield, they closed their warrant, I said, you gotta leave it open till we have our meeting tonight, because it's all mixed, it's all together, um, so if you, if you are going to assess them for the fire panel, you have to know that, because they have to put up their...
Yes, but there was, there's nothing to prevent us from voting in September to pay for the fire panel, out of school choice, or E and D in this committee, there's nothing to prevent us from doing it.
Correct, but then, but the towns wouldn't be able to use the difference on whatever their other problems are.
Yeah, I know.
But if you did switch it to all debt exclusion, and then we got more information on the roof bid, the fire panel bid, and all those things, we could reduce it, if we felt more comfortable at that point, so...
Yep.
I realize it's our decision, but you guys have to provide us the comfort factor, if you can do that, I'm good.
And we have, we have reduced the budget on county and floors, the elementary.
Uh, we took, I think, capital away.
We took the capital.
On town floor, one year.
I always, you can do it, that's always, that's a, that's a nerve-wracking thing, in a bad habit to start.
Can I ask a question? Have we ever tabled the rest of the agenda to the next meeting? I'm just, I'm just asking, I asked Bill, he doesn't remember.
You, you, I will let you do some, but there's some things you have to do.
Okay.
And I can go through them quickly.
I'll make a motion that we go through it quickly.
I didn't say that right, did I?
We can, we can, we can move pretty quickly, I think, through this.
If there's any public comment at this point, like, kudos to you for staying on this.
There isn't.
I don't think there's anybody here.
Chris and Mr. Roberts.
Checking them off, like, quickly, uh, George?
So I sent everybody my principal's report, if you have any questions about it, please feel free to let me know.
Thank you.
You all know.
Thank you.
Sorry, but...
The policies.
Another one in an actual second...
I'm good on policies.
The policies, we've already, I've already read through them in the last time, so it really is a motion to accept the policies.
You want me to read all the...
You gotta read them into record, though, yes, you do.
I make a motion to accept these policies, KCD, KHJ, LBC, EHAA, EHB, GBE, JICJ, KDC, KDCB, EFC, EFD...
I've been looking at it for a long, for a long time.
BOTU.
BOTU.
All right, somebody second.
Second.
I'll, maybe we can, I'll, in favor? And Damian's on there, if you don't have that.
Move through your policy, KCB, second.
All in favor? And you got Damian, I'm gonna see that, too.
And accept policies, CEBA, fuel efficient vehicles.
Second. All in favor? Look at that, already through with that. Calendar?
Calendar, note that the big decision of next year is, um, I've done this calendar, I did run it by, um, the associations of vote, where we have to get permission from them if we're going to start before the last Wednesday in August, and we do wanna start, um, prior to that, um, the main thing to look at between the two calendars that were given to you, is that one has a two-week, um, holiday break, Christmas break, sometimes called, um, and one has us coming back on the Thursday, coming back for Thursday, Friday, is because the way that the year falls, you, you return to school is on Thursday, in some districts, in Western Mass, those superintendents are gonna talk about it, are choosing to do a two-week break, and some are choosing to come back on the Thursday. So this is the first reading, we will be voting this at a joint meeting, and it's just enough spice to keep that meeting nice and long. Right, so if you have any questions on that, um, and it obviously changed the end date of the school year, about everything else is the same, um...
How many snow days are there next year?
What's that?
How many snow days next year?
I'm, I'm thinking about three.
Okay.
One of them's, one of them's gonna be the wrong call, just gonna rain, and everything's gonna be...
I made this request last year, it's not necessarily associated with this one, but can you get an update of the last snow day? Like, can we have that on the...
Yes.
Website or something like that, so it's like, just so you know, there have been, there have been two snow days.
I tried to add it when we were announcing...
Now the last snow day is going to be this, as a, remembering, oh, I have a question, late Wednesday, like, I don't know, thank you.
It's not that, it's, it's what, with, when do we, you know, how do we avoid having to pay Juneteenth holiday? That's, that's...
Bill?
Yeah.
Bill, quiet. Sorry.
Uh, SOA plan?
So, the other one is the school committee calendar, um, just first read, just take a look through, it goes very similar to this year's, doubling up in the beginning and single things in the middle of the year, uh, with December off again, um, just be ready for that discussion. SOA plan, I need you to vote this this evening, um, basically the state requires us to submit a plan about how we're gonna use student of opportunity act funds, as you see, we had to put this whole plan together for the fourteen thousand dollars that they gave us. So, um, we actually have a pretty comprehensive plan, there has been years, the last few years, not been as comprehensive as this. In summary, for Frontier, the, what the plan really is, for outcomes, is the NICA portfolio program for Frontier, um, the innovative pathways, which we received a thing about tonight, is increased enrollment in that, decreased absentee rates, and then new graduation requirement, um, of a cultural studies requirement of two and a half credits. So those are, um, the markers for the SOA for Frontier. You can read through the full thing, obviously, I'm not gonna go through it step by step, but it is a requirement for the state that you vote this.
Not...
Hang, uh, can I ask a question about that cultural studies?
You're not, you're not voting that graduation requirement in this, you're just approving the plan, and the graduation requirement...
That's great, sorry, you...
It's fine, yeah.
But that's okay, all right, great.
Make a motion to, on the SOA plan, or vote, make a motion to accept the SOA plan?
Second.
All in favor? All right, now you're, now you're up for the new graduation?
Do you have the graduation requirement repaired in the...
The cultural studies, the two and a half, so basically, we're asking, we're asking to add it for a graduation requirement, basically, uh, asking all students to be able to take a two and a half credit, it's in every other day class, uh, it could either be in particular, it would either be like in gender studies, or in, uh, certain classes that fulfill the requirement, um...
Yeah, I guess that was, pardon my question is, what culture studies will fulfill that requirement?
So there are certain classes within our ELA, uh, or, er, within our ELA, uh, classes, so we've got, like, we've got gender studies, we've got women's studies, uh, we've got African-American studies, things like that, so we've just...
So they're existing studies?
Yeah, they're existing classes, all right.
Yeah, okay.
I would actually table this one, so that we can give you the full list, so we look at... I, I got the, I got the message, like, I thought you were doing that, so I think, let's, let's table that once, because we're changing graduation requirements...
Perfect, 'cause I have more questions, that's, that's, that'd be great, yeah.
Yeah, I got a question about that, too.
Right, so we'll put on the next agenda.
Excellent.
I think it's vote to table it.
Just to clarify, the next agenda is not...
Not Thursday, the next regular...
Just wanna clarify.
Which is not till May?
Yeah.
Theoretically, you have to vote to table, and then vote to pull it off today. Okay.
I'll go to table this, you have to reach here and I'll table, so, I'll go to table, uh, the graduation requirement.
Second.
All in favor, tableings? All right.
Thank you, Paul.
Uh, almost, sorry, uh, if you have not checked your email, or not seen an email, um, I will give an update that Carrie sent out a link with the superintendent evaluation, there's a very nice synopsis, uh, both embedded in there, separate from the evaluation, and to do the evaluation, if everybody can do that, time is ticking by the fifty, uh, that gives us a chance to get everything wrapped up, and get a nice presentation for you.
And Carrie's looking for a hundred percent participation.
That's the plan, no pressure, but we don't wanna be the only school committee that's not at a hundred percent participation. I'm very competitive, and I will hunt you down.
I'll follow you.
All right, the collaborative Joe is not here to give that update, do you have any questions? Would you like to pull us into executive session?
Um, the bus contract, we'll, we'll, I was talking about generally at open session right now, but the bus contract, you know, did come in, it, I did send it to all of you, the, just a summary sheet, so you can take a look at that, it doesn't affect, we talked about it already, doesn't affect Frontier on that, I did put it on all the agendas, because we, we haven't accepted the contract yet, um, because we're accepting it, but we have sixty days to do so, sixty, ninety?
Sixty.
Sixty days, and we will be voting at a joint meeting, um, the elementary's obviously are gonna be wrestling with that a little bit more, and I guess there's any general conversations, if we're gonna do anything that talks about, you know, negotiation of a contract, or not accepting of a bid, or doing that kind of, then we should go to executive session, because that's, um, so forth, but, um, if anybody's any general fellow questions on it, I can answer that, or you can shoot me an email, um, that kind of stuff.
What's the number?
So Frontier's portion is going from three ninety-six, three hundred ninety-six thousand to four hundred and sixty thousand. However, the budget had a buffer already built in from the last contract, so there isn't a negative financial impact for Frontier. We're reducing the number of buses with the new contract, which has already happened, but we did not change the budget. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay. Overall, district-wide, the increase was almost forty-eight percent, which is gonna hit the elementary schools at an eighty percent increase.
And is, so, but we've been paying a, have we been paying a fuel surcharge?
We have been paying a fuel surcharge, and we've been paying a COLA, the fuel surcharge is not going to be in the new contract, that was removed, and the COLA will be fixed, it will no longer be based on inflation, so the two are sort of gonna outweigh each other by getting rid of the fuel. Previously, the current COLA is based on the CPI, so, like, this year, because there wasn't a huge change in the CPI, the COLA was minimal. Two years ago, the COLA was through the roof, because it was like, three percent, or four and a half percent difference, it's gonna be a fixed flat, two, five percent every year past the first year, but no fuel adjustment cost.
This contract goes on to the...
Yeah.
Were we in the mix for the county-wide bidding, did that open up to us last year?
That's done, we didn't put in for it, um, we submitted our own bid.
But this, this was the history behind, history lesson behind this, for those of you who don't know what that bid would look like if somebody else, somebody else had bid.
There, we're, Grco's still below market value, so while there's shocking increases for us...
Let's see, it's by, it's still the lowest, but this is adjusted, that brings it closer to what our northern Frank County partners are paying for...
We tried this like ten years ago with the, with the hole, and it was like...
The numbers may be getting a little better, and I have a joint, um, this is still better than what they're paying up there, but it is a market adjustment, and a significant increase, and it's, timing-wise, it's not, it's not right there, but that's...
So we get sixty days to vote?
It'll be on the April joint agenda, each committee has to accept or reject the contract or do a job.
Okay.
All square?
All right.
Move through there?
Second.
All in there? Okay, let's see.